Okay, welcome everyone. I call the meeting to order. If we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance. Well, it's certainly nice to see a full house. We have a lot of meetings that are pretty empty these days, so there must be something important on the agenda. Not sure what it is yet, but we'll find out. I'd like to start by doing a brief introduction of Art Ostin, who is our new interim manager. This is his first board meeting, so we welcome Art. He was the village administrator for the longest time at Fox River Grove, right? And then has been an interim manager on and off for many, many years. So he has a lot of experience. We were fortunate to find him when Greg decided to take another position. So we welcome you to the meeting tonight.
Thank you very much, Ian. It's a pleasure to be here and working with, started working with some of you and the staff. So great community, good organization, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the homeowners' associations. We know that Orchards of Long Grove will not be here. Joe told us, Gallo told us he wouldn't. But Sebastian Pidgen of Oak Island here by any chance?
Do we need to take attendance, or is that...
Do we have to do attendance now, Vic?
Well, we can note that everyone is present on the board.
Yeah, I mean, we're out of the COVID rules, right?
Without the COVID rules, then we don't have to establish a quorum to let anybody in.
All good.
Yeah, so note that everyone's here today. Is Sebastian Pidgen here online or in person? Okay, if not, we'll move to public comment. There were some emails labeled "public comment." Those ones that were labeled "public comment" were posted on our village website. There was one that came in pretty late. It didn't make it, but it will get posted. I will ask anyone in the room if you'd like to make some public comment. If you do, I would just ask that you state your name, address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment? Please.
My name is Steve Erstein, 5147 Bridlewood Lane. And I'm one of the folks that emailed everyone, trying to get some closure and information really regarding the new Long Grove Fire Protection District station. Feel that we need a lot more information before we can make that kind of decision. Transparency doesn't seem to be there, at least for the public at this moment. Would love to have some more information as to places that were considered, as well as traffic implications in the area. How will it be mitigated for safety? All sorts of other concerns that have been entered into through different emails, notices to the board, so just wanted to go on record here.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Please, go.
My name is Joel, 5259 Milco. I won't take up a lot of time. I just want to echo the sentiment that we're just going to...
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Please.
Rob Sykes, 5189 Eastgate Lane.
I know you, yep.
I just wanted again, really briefly, just reiterate and support these two gentlemen and their comments.
Thanks, Rob, and thanks for your service, too.
Scott Miller, 5137 Bridlewood Court. Same concerns about the fire protection district that Steve just brought up. And lack of information.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for those comments. Please.
Scott Green, 5222 Briar Press Lane. Like to join with the same concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Edlund, 5144 Bridlewood Lane. Also have the same concerns.
Thank you. Please.
William Markey, 5185 Eastgate. Incentive to share concerns.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Eric Nagash, 5133 Eastgate Lane. Same concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? I will just make one comment. So this is our first reading of feedback from the plan commission. We do have the fire chief here today. He has a spot on the agenda to talk about public safety, so I think he's going to give us an overview. And then we're going to get a readout from the village planner. And then we'll discuss a little bit about what action to take. But there's nothing on the agenda tonight that we'll be taking action on tonight. We're just going to get a readout and understand the situation as best we can. Because this is really the first that's coming to the board. First, we're getting a chance to look at it. And this will be our first readout on it, based on the decision of the plan commission last week. So with that, if there's no other comments, I'll move to the public safety reports. And Chief Sagal, I see that you're here. I know you wanted to make a few remarks. You're welcome to stand up if you want, so people can hear you or wherever you feel comfortable.
Do you like it there, Eric?
Yeah, probably, because so somebody online can hear you. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Sergeant Jacob, of the village trustee and the village staff. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I know we have a standing agenda item that we can present the public safety report. And we occasionally do that, particularly at the end of the year. We present you with our annual report. So the Long Grove Fire Protection District has proudly served this community since 1929. In 1939, its homeowners approved the formation of the fire district, which encompassed areas of Kilauea, Vernon, and Palatine Townships. The response area has changed over the years due to villages annexing territory and disconnecting from the fire protection district. We now serve areas of Cook and Lake County, and the villages of Long Grove, Kildir, Deer Park, Utheron Woods, and Lincolnshire. Fire Protection District constructed the current station on Old McHenry Road in 1981 as a volunteer fire station. It has been expanded twice, and it currently exceeds the maximum square footage for the lot size. The facility has served us well. We've taken good care of it, but we've outgrown it and the original intent that it was constructed for. There are also several issues that do not comply with current codes and standards for a fire station. After a facility needs study was completed, it was determined that we would need a larger facility. We pursued a bond referendum in April, which passed with 55% of vote total. We had a consultant prepare GIS coordinates to locate the best possible site for reaching the most areas within our desired response time goal, about six and a half minutes 90% of the time. Our response area is unique in that the road network that we serve is very limited, and few roads exist that extend north and south or east and west throughout the entire district. Within 40-plus years in the fire service, no one has ever complained that we got there too soon. Those in need expect two things: that we get there fast and that we know what we're doing. We evaluated numerous parcels of land in the immediate area and determined that seven and a half acres at 5159 and 5161 at the Kissick was available, affordable, provided the best access, and would be the least intrusive to neighboring properties. This parcel also improves the overall response times for most of the entire fire district. We currently have a contract for this property, but have not yet acquired it. As you know, purchase of real property by a public body is governed by the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It's exempt from disclosure, and while there's been some desire to identify each of these other properties, that is no longer relevant. This parcel was also selected because of the current landscape and the potential to improve the property by constructing a fire station there. Another major benefit of this location is its proximity to water and sewer. The district will extend village water at our expense to the north side of Apptekissick Road, making it available for extending that service for domestic use in the nearby neighborhoods. We are meeting with Lake County Engineering and permitting later this week to review these plans and to coordinate the water pipe construction with the Apptekissick Road widening project along with the village engineering. We are proposing a new 24,000-square-foot facility that will serve the public needs for the next 50 years. The timeline is proposed to allow us to begin serving the community in August 2025. This is an aggressive goal, but acquiring the property as soon as possible will allow for the engineering and infrastructure process to begin. The station will contain community meeting space, allowing use by nonprofit groups and homeowners' associations. We are also proposing a community engagement room that may be used by sheriff's deputies for meeting with citizens and completing reports. We envision this area as an expansion of our medical services to residents who need basic service without transport to a hospital. The station will be aesthetically pleasing and will fit in with the character of the Long Grove community. We fully expect it to improve the image of Long Grove, and the architectural commission will be engaged in the design process. Fire District's not looking for any special considerations and will follow the village processes for constructing a new building. We understand the relocation of a fire station may evoke emotions from nearby neighborhoods, but we can assure you, we've been very good neighbors since 1982 in our current location, and will continue to be so here as well. We're asking for your trust and faith in us as a unit of local government to see that we are truly acting in the best interest of public safety, that we are making a significant investment in the community, and that we can improve our service with this new location. Finally, we're asking the village board to be responsive to the needs of the fire district and to consider that our steadfast commitment we have to serving the 10,000-plus citizens in our community. Our mission is caring for others, providing outstanding service. And we need your support to help us fulfill our mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say it's a 24,000-square-foot facility?
Correct.
The building is 24,000 square feet?
That's a big garage. We have a lot of equipment.
For some reason, I thought it was 24,000 square feet.
Our current location is 15,500.
I see. Thank you.
Could I ask you one question?
Yes, you may.
And it may seem irrelevant, but you said that the vote was 55%.
Correct.
What percentage of the electric drove it?
I did not bring those numbers with me, but it was a relatively small number. I want to say 13%.
Because as an active village person, I didn't know if you had a representative.
It wouldn't have been on your ballot.
Yeah, because we're up north.
Well, of course not. It wouldn't be on my ballot for my office that's here. So of course I would know the area. So I just wondered. But that's fine. That's fine. I agree.
We held meetings, and then we did multiple mailings to every registered voter in the district.
I saw signs. I saw signs.
And that's the reason I asked, because I got several notes from people saying we never got any information about it. And it seems that many of the...
I'm going to get your question.
The plan commission, that they didn't know too much about it either. So I just look at it from the beginning as needing more information.
The first I heard that people didn't get mailings, so nobody in Bridlewood got it. No single piece of information until we got it, though.
Interesting. I got it. I'm on Arlington Heights Road.
I think part of the problem is... I received mine, but I pay attention to that stuff. Sometimes in election cycles, you get so much on a daily basis. You probably do what I do, is just stand over the trash can and it's like, you know, I already made it my night drive. I'm quoting whatever. And the fact is, the local elections are very small turnouts. And yet, they're probably the most important votes that you could possibly... And we have so few people who speak for the majority. And if it was legal and valid, it's done. They have trained us left the station, right?
Should have won my vote, Tim.
I apologize. I have a few that was our mailers that went out. And we haven't shared those two ever once.
I pulled it up online. I feel like I've learned it from everything.
There.
We do social media. We put it on Facebook and on Instagram. And we did what we thought was the best thing we could do. And sent two mailers to everyone, and used a company that did that. So we didn't personally do it. We can't do it as the fire district. So we had a company do that.
So I'll just ask, any other comments for the fire chief?
The statement that you read, chief, is that something that can make available?
Yep, that'd be great to have. And what I'm going to do now, so we've got the village planners' report. We'll discuss this, but we've got something wedged in between, which is called a consent agenda. And this should be something pretty easy to do. And then we'll get right to the planners' report and kind of pick this back up, all right? So on that consent agenda, we have a few items that were not in the board packet, and it's all of the executive session meeting minutes. So I'm going to just read through. We have the consideration approval of July 2023 treasures report. We have consideration approval of the meeting minutes from the August 8, 2023, meeting, subject to non-susceptible revisions. We have the consideration approval of emergency meeting minutes from August 14. I do believe there is a revision, right?
A revision both to the August 10 and August 14 emergency meetings. I'll share that with the board.
You'll go through that, okay. And then we have the consideration approval resolution approving a change of authorized agents with the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And then consideration approval of a special event permit for pools, landscaping, and nursery for tree sales, the events on 9/16/23. So Vic, you want to explain the...
Sure. On the item number eight, the emergency board meeting minutes, not the executive session, just the emergency board meeting minutes. And item number nine, the emergency meeting from August 14. Both of those should have, right after the call to order, the following sentence. Village President Jacob announced at the village board's meeting an emergency session because of the impending departure of village manager Jackson on August 18, 2023. I'd also note that on the August 14 regular, or emergency meeting minutes, the line with the vote on the interim manager agreement is on a roll call vote. So with those changes, I think those meeting minutes are ready for your consideration.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I also have one minor change to the August 8 meeting minutes. Under public comment, I refer to the village resident who had an issue with the neighbor. I refer to his Grizzly Farms. And trustee Tenuch, you pointed out that it's actually Abbott Farms. So I will make that change.
Michelle, she barely wrote what the person said. The person is fault, so we're...
Got it.
And that's not a resident? Oh, for instance. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
As amended, right?
As amended.
Yep. Okay. Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Chris Meyer. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Varasti.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Trustee Jamil.
Trustee Jamil. Consent agenda. I'm sorry? Consent agenda.
I didn't get the copy up.
Which, the minute?
The fourth.
It's just the manager's report, so it's the agenda. It was, I believe you emailed?
No, Dana, you emailed the manager's report. The manager's report is also on a Google Drive under...
That's not part of the public packet.
Correct.
You want to come back?
Yeah. Trustee O'Connor.
I have to abstain.
Okay.
And trustee Tenuch.
Hi.
Wait for Dr. Jamil here. Give him a second. Trustee Jamil, hi, okay. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move to the village planners' report presented by...
Tiber Wegrin.
Get your name right eventually.
How do you pronounce it, Taylor?
Well, the word way into words, Wegrin. Wegrin.
Wegrin, thank you.
Wegrin, okay.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to be joining you guys in person this week. This week's planners' report is largely a summary of the pieces of the day meetings from August 15, as well as the architectural commission meetings of last month. So to summarize, the plan commission meeting on August 15, we had two agenda items there of note. The first one, obviously, is the planners' report, item B, also on that one first, with 4359, Illinois Route 22. Bill staff received a petition for a special use permit for a religious facility at that address after initial review, staff advertised the public hearing, and certified mailings were sent out to the public regarding that petition. In the time between the certified mailings and public notice and public hearing, the village received numerous requests for additional times from law parties, from the applicant, and from the council, the public, and the commission. And it was determined that in the interest of providing additional information for this prior to the public hearings, that continuation would be preferred for that case. So the manner, as the plan commission saw it, there was no discussion at that evening's meeting. The matter was simply continued.
Does it continue to just the next meeting, or is it even further in the future?
It'll be continued until notice is given. So those who were previously noticed were sent some additional notice of that continuation. It's also been posted on the village website. So those who might be interested in that matter can continue to submit their comments. That will continue to collect those, keep them on file with that case. Otherwise, they will be noted when that meeting is...
The application is incomplete still, right?
Right. There's supplemental materials to be delivered, and once it is, we can get the notice reset and the hearing scheduled.
Well, that was just the IAV here on the planners' report, the Long Grove Fire Protection District on Apptekissick Road, the extension of the... We've already had a brief introduction here of the chief. Don't talk too much about the details of that, but it is a petition for a special use permit to allow for a fire station within the R2 zoning district. That's articulated in the zoning code and in the R2 district. A fire station is a permissible special use permit. So special use permit process requires a public hearing for the plan commission, and then ultimately goes for approval. The commission made a motion on August 15. There's a motion to deny, which passed five to zero. It tells us to summarize the collective opinions of the commission. And I submitted my planner's report here. It requires, due to insufficient information, to validate or verify that the special use permit as proposed, or petition for a special use permit, satisfies the standards outlined in the zoning code for granting a special use permit. The zoning code has certain standards for which the plan commission should be relied in making a determination on whether to recommend people or denial of a special use permit. And the commission there largely felt that there was just not enough information to justify the standards. So these are good, comprehensive list of those thoughts there. But include deficiencies, generally included the locations of alternative sites that were considered, evidence of support that the proposed site is more appropriate than those alternative sites, evidence of support that the use of the proposed location is necessary to provide a facility that is in the interest of public convenience or public welfare, specific development and landscape plan, demonstration of the capacity and capability to complete the project as proposed, professional studies, technical reports, or plans to demonstrate that all steps possible have been taken to minimize any adverse impact of proposed use of the location. And again, those are generally related to those standards granting special use permits in the zoning code. One other item of note that commissioners generally wanted to make note of those four is that they made available the opportunity to be used for further continuation, that additional materials could be provided for considerations in public hearings, and the commissioners applying that for that opportunity in that respect. The locals may have that even so. So next step and the recommendation, perhaps I could turn this over to Vic, please?
Sure. A couple things that, just to follow up on what Tyler had mentioned, Taylor had mentioned, sorry.
You know Tyler?
Here, I should be able to get that part. I couldn't. Wegrin, I don't know about the tailor, actually, I guess. Insofar as the applications, deficiencies, there were a number of items that were not there that would typically be required. I had specific conversations with the attorney for the fire protection district about that. And this is one of those unfortunate circumstances where there's a chicken and egg issue in that they don't own the property. They want to close on the property, but they don't want to close on it without the zoning. And they also don't want to expend tremendous amounts of public funds in developing plans for a site that they don't own. And so, which comes first, chicken or egg? I'm still waiting for Amazon to make the deliveries, so I can tell you. But at this point, the issue became a troublesome one for the plan commission because they are accustomed to, and under our code are entitled to, that kind of information. On the other hand, due to the circumstances for the fire protection district, they were presenting more of the location for approval so that they could then go the next step of doing all the detailed planning. It's a dilemma that we don't typically encounter. And so what's before the board is really, I think, three different options. One is just accept the plan commission recommendation and deny this. I should add that if we, if the board does deny it, under our code, this can't come back for another two-year period unless the board creates an exception. You may recall, some of you perhaps unfortunately, when we had the issue come up with the solar array at the school, we had a similar issue, that we didn't have sufficient information. The village board denied it with the opportunity to refile. So that's something that the board can do here if that's the choice. So that's one option. Option number two is simply to remand it back to the plan commission that retains that dilemma for the fire protection district. I don't know what their time schedule is on their purchase contract, but I understand that there is a window of opportunity to purchase that property and that window, you know, may be foreclosing any option on that after some point of time. And the third is that the village can grant them the special use permit based on, you know, based on the location and the like, and impose a series of conditions that would ensure that ultimately the village gets all the information it would typically get and have the opportunity to review everything in the manner that it typically does. I will say that that third option is an unusual one. But this is not a typical circumstance, so it's something that the board can take consideration to. I would be happy to answer any questions or try to offer anything. I would note, one of the things that, you know, there was some, in some of the comments that I saw, there was some misunderstanding. A fire station is an authorized special use in our zoning code. And the Illinois Supreme Court has made clear that when something is a special use permit, it is something that is allowed, but it is subject to special review. And that's what we're talking about here. And whether or not the special review has been able to be fully conducted because of the deficiencies in the application was what was the threshold question, I think, from the plan commission, and the reason why the plan commission properly denied the request after offering the opportunity to continue it. But again, this is a use that we've already identified in our code as an appropriate use within this district so long as the ultimate development does not present undue adverse impacts on neighboring properties.
I actually have a question. You mentioned that if it's denied, they're going to wait two years to come back. I'm thinking back to the previous meeting where we discussed the garage, which was denied. But he was able to come back with different plans sooner than two years. Is that not the case?
It applies in both. But the discussion we had with the gentleman with the garage was if he were looking for zoning relief of a materially different location on the lot. And I think, you know, there we're talking about an existing use and a new facility on the use, which would be having different impacts in a different location. I think in this instance, the issue is really, is this an appropriate use in this location? At least that's the first level of inquiry. And the village board does have the ability, if it were to take action on this and deny it, to still give them the opportunity to come back, as we did, you know, we have precedent. it, to still give them the opportunity to come back as we did, you know, we have precedent for that and we have the authority to do that.
The one that's listed in there was the garage, which was remanded back to the plan commission, not denied, which was two years.
Well, at the last meeting, it was actually denied.
This last one, but the first time it came to the board.
Right. The first time it was a remand. The second time, it was a denial, but the board made clear that if you come back with a materially different proposal, i.e. a different location with different impacts, you wouldn't be barred by that.
Can I ask a question on this alternate, alternative site?
Go ahead, we'll let trustee Chris Meyer go.
I'm feeling that there's sort of different usage of that phrase. I heard the chief say that it's not, nicely say it's not our business. That's what I heard at least. And then also, alternative sites, I'm just, I'm curious, is that the purview of the plan commission? I can understand alternative site within the school district property for a solar field or within somebody's owned property for a garage. That I understand, but this seems to use the same phrase in a different way.
That is one of the stated standards in our zoning code and it's a pretty common standard throughout Illinois. It's referenced, or at least it has some referential basis in the Illinois Zoning Enabling Act. I would say however, that, I want to say this politely, but I don't, the chief was able to, I'm going to be a little less polite.
That's okay.
It's not within our purview really to make the determination of what is going to be the optimal location for a fire station. That is their expertise and I think it is, you know, an appropriate consideration to have out there, but it also is something that a great deal of deference should probably be granted to the fire protection district.
That's, or it's kind of confused, the usage of that phrase. I completely understand garage within my property, but in this case, it's almost a business decision or it's a.
And it's more, it's more than a business decision because of that. And keep in mind, our village is different than other municipalities which might have their own fire department.
Yeah.
We don't have that. We have a separate governmental unit that makes that determination on behalf of the community, but not on behalf of the village. So, it's a somewhat awkward situation. I will note, and y'all may recall, that a few years back, I had a case in front of the Illinois Supreme Court where we were able to say to a school, you can't do it there, but the Illinois Supreme Court said we were right, but when they come back to you, you better at least give them very significant deference. And that applies equally to the fire protection district. So, that, the courts have seen this as a balancing situation when one governmental unit is required to seek zoning relief from another governmental unit. We certainly maintain our jurisdiction, but we are supposed to maintain that jurisdiction with respect for the expertise of the governmental body that's coming before us.
Thank you.
Trustee Jamil?
I have a quick question. A mental memory, a valid question about the referendum. So, the village, so happens because the word on the ballot is really confusing. They said new station rather than, you know, replace the existing. So, this, that's valid. So, any decision the board takes, because the referendum is now passed for the bond and also the new fire station. So, any decision the board makes, does that have implications legally on the referendum that was passed?
Legally, no. There are two different issues. One is a referendum for a bond for a fire station. That's, that's been decided by the voters and it's, and it's been approved. This is a separate issue as to whether or not a fire station can be located at this particular spot. You know, I think it's certainly not inappropriate for the board to recognize that the voters, at least those who voted, have spoken on the issue and that there is a support for a new fire station. Whether the question, the question really is whether this is the location. Then that comes back to the whether this is an optimal location for providing the services that this district has the specific responsibility to run.
Bobby?
Before we have icicles, could we change the temperature?
Oh geez. Can you turn up the thermostat, please? Yeah. Actually, it feels good right now, but there's a little bit of heat in here, I think. I'm feeling it.
I just buttoned my wool jacket.
Okay, well, my question to you is, which process is most efficient with most clarity so that we end up with the information we need?
I would say that if the board were to essentially take it under advisement and get more information on the issue of locating the site here and decide whether or not this is the right site. And then if it, if the board says it's not, that's easy enough. If the board says it is, then we would have the board consider an ordinance that would grant a special use permit, but it would be loaded with conditions so that the fire protection district would have to come back to the village board and demonstrate that all of the typical standards for our applications are satisfied in a way that is appropriate for that location and the village.
Okay, so who's the evolution, the condition, you or they?
Well, I mean, the conditions would be driven by what our zoning ordinance has as the expected requirement.
Okay, and not something new.
Well, I mean, the conditions will be, you know, there's site-specific conditions that might come into play, but I would, let me, let me just give you a real big for example. If you say, yes, this is the right location, then you could consider an ordinance that would say, you're granted a special use permit, but you can't get a permit for anything until you have delivered a site plan, building plans, landscaping plans, traffic access studies and plans, utility plans, all of which are subject to the review and approval of the village.
Okay, so we're, everybody's in a safe position?
Right. And if they can't demonstrate, you know, if we grant the special use permit and then they can't demonstrate that they can actually deliver on the types of things that we necessarily would require of anybody else, then, you know, that's a different issue. I mean, I think that typically, when those kinds of conditions are set out there, they're always doable. It's a question of will and sometimes money.
So, to clarify that on a different level, I understand site condition, perfectly understand. Are the inquiries regarding how the fire department went about making their decision appropriate? Is that, in other words, I'm thinking if we send this back to the PCCBA and we say, here, here, here's the vote. I know that during the meeting and with the people here, the questions they have are honest questions, but are the questions that are appropriate for us to ask the PCCBA to have answers such as, you know, what's the response time, the traffic conditions are X, Y, Z, what other locations did you consider, you know? Are those?
I think that those are appropriate questions, but again, I think that in terms of the, you know, whether it was, they are constrained, as the chief had said, they are constrained a bit from discussing other sites because they may have, I don't know, they may have back, you know, backdoor offers ready to go for those and they don't want to mess that up.
Precisely.
But I think that certainly, it's not a typical for a fire department to have data as for response times to different locations. And, you know, my guess is that there might be some comparison to the existing location compared to the proposed location. And if there are improved response times, that, you know, it doesn't have to be the best location. I mean, but if it's a better location, I think that's something that a lot of deference is warranted.
Sure. But I guess what I'm, and maybe I should have used the word, conditions. Are those appropriate conditions for approving or not approving petitions?
I would think, I would think that it would be, we behoove the fire protection to present to the village specific information about that, because I think it's certainly a concern of the residents who are here and I think that if they have the information, which I presume that they do, that could assuage those concerns. At the same time, you know, I, I think that there is a fine line based on what the courts have said that we can't necessarily step in their shoes and say, no, we can do a better job of figuring out how you're going to respond in a timely fashion because we have zoning control. I think that we would be very hard pressed to do that. But I think we can expect for the fire protection district to give a more full explanation of what they determined and how they determined it. And I don't mean, chief, to suggest anything other than you have that information and I presume that you do and that can be presented more publicly.
PCCBA had that information.
Okay.
Now, was it provided?
No, it wasn't.
Let me point out, I am chairman, I'm sort of the designated PCCBA person present tonight. The chairman asked in the previous meeting to get the alternate locations and one of the issues was response time. They came back with two maps of response time, one from the current station and one from the proposed station. So, they put response time on the table themselves by bringing two maps, one of which was inaccurate, by the way. The map of the new station, by the way, had the station location wrong. It put the station location, not where the proposed station was, the valley bunion Gulf facility currently is, which made a lot of difference in response time. It wasn't even accurate. But second of all, our chair, our chairperson, asked specifically to get the alternate locations and they came back, they did not say, we cannot, as we don't, it's improper for us to give it, like people saying today, but rather they just didn't, they showed up without it, without saying, we can't give it to you? Well, we can give it to you. It's more like, it's more like a couple of spilling water, didn't bring the information, without saying, we can't bring the information. That's the first I heard, of we can't bring the information. So, response time is relevant to us and one of our commissioners pointed out, response time of the new station was actually inferior for the south part of the village, such as country called states. So, I don't know what to say about how relevant that is to us as a plan commission as opposed to fire department, but if on behalf of the village, I don't know what else to say. But they put response time on the table by bringing response maps to the meeting and then, but that given us the information that we start, our chair specifically asked for in previous meeting of a location, and maybe if they can't give exact answers, they can at least give the area where the alternate possibilities are, that they'd be considered in terms of what's the better location.
And you point out, Christian Cohen, in case you're not all familiar, Christian Cohen's on the PCCBA. The plan commission was clearly in a awkward situation. It is supposed to be making its decision based on the criteria and the application requirements in our code and they didn't have all the application materials. And so, they made the decision that I think they kind of had to make because they don't necessarily have the same discretion to disregard some of the requirements that we put in the code. That's a code requirement that the village board created, not that the plan commission created. So, again, that's why in terms of your question, trustee O'Reilly, the village board might be in the best position to kind of take the reins on this going forward because we're taking an approach different than what we've already told the plan commission through our ordinance on how it ought to be done.
Also, the issues of like landscape and site plan and all kinds of things, I know you said that since they don't own the land, it might be premature, but I know on many occasions, petitioners have come and yet they've bought the land, but they do have all the tools.
That's absolutely right.
We're going to buy the land and see what's going to cost.
Again, the, I think the distinction here is that Fire Protection District is spending public funds and they, at least what was communicated to me by their lawyer was that they had some hesitancy to be spending public funds regarding some land that they don't yet own and they wanted to move forward with the purchase, but they didn't want to do so without the zoning. Again, chicken and egg issue here that we don't ordinarily confront.
And two, I think the commercial developers have contracts that are subject to permits and approvals. So, they, their investors will expend those funds in order to move forward with the contract.
I wonder if public entity would be any different in terms of how they contract for use of property in a commercial entity? It would be contingent upon approvals.
Yeah, my guess, again, I have not seen their contract and it's something that wouldn't be available under FOIA. My guess is that they probably have a zoning contingency in their contract, but, you know, I think that, again, it's a judgment that's a little hard for the village to put itself in the shoes of the fire protection district regarding the appropriateness of spending money on land that it doesn't own. So, that, this, as I said, is a unusual circumstance because of the nature of the applicant being another, you know, public body.
Trustee Nebraska, we haven't heard from you yet. Do you have any questions or thoughts?
Well, I do have a question from what the chief presented, but it's kind of a minor question. In your narrative, you mentioned that this new proposal would service the community for up to the next 50 years. What happens between now and 50 years that justifies that statement? Does the population, your square footage doubles, does the population double within your service area or at the end of 50 years, what happens to the firehouse? Is it also deemed obsolete or what, what happens in 50 years that causes you to make that statement?
That is the benchmark that we've been to, to architectural seminars and design conferences that say that this is the benchmark that you design for 50 years. That's not to say, you know, that that stage is completely obsolete. It gives history shows that that's about the life cycle of a public building for that type of use. I, we've looked at population projections for our district and they're going to say fairly stable, I would say, probably during that time, you know, unless something dramatic happens and they knock everything down and put high rises in, which I don't see happening. But it should be about the same population base and about the same area.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know why it struck me. I was like, what happened to 50 years? I just had to start.
You have, you have a lovely habit of thinking about end of life and what's it going to look like. No, I mean, I mean that in a good way.
I'm the garbage man, right? So, we end up with another big building that we don't have a use for, right? I mean, that's also kind of a question mark, but that's kind of more of a detail. You know, my comment, kind of discussion with the board just reminds me of the challenge we had with the Vision United Methodist Church. You know, church seems like a bucolic use of that property. Petitioner came into the board and said, hey, how about a church? And we're like, yeah, that's fine. And I think that was plan commission, maybe not board yet, but, but then when they went away to look at the details and with that drawing finally came back looking like it was a church, community center, daycare center, parsonages, outbuildings, and the details of that were what overwhelmed, I think, the plan commission. of that were what overwhelmed, I think, the plant commission at the time, and received quite a bit of public outcry, if you will. And that's what troubles me a little bit, so saying, "Yeah, let's go ahead and find, and we think this is a good use for that particular property, but we haven't seen traffic study." I have no idea how a fire truck gets in and out of there during rush hour, and I don't know how it goes in north. I'm thinking about us guys up north, I don't know how you make that turn onto 83 and expect to go north anytime, but that's a detail that I'm not an expert in, I'm sure traffic study, I know the lights go off and everybody kind of tries to move out of the way, I get that. So I'm kind of concerned about the details. I think the details on the aesthetics of the building could be worked out with the residents. I think the landscaping could be worked out. You know, we figured out a way to do that with the solar field and kind of get the residents and the petitioner together. So I'm really troubled with kind of giving the go-ahead, and if you will, to go ahead and continue the planning process, when the details really need to go after the body that should be working those details out, which is, you know, the PZ, oh, I can't say the other, the planning commission, right?
Them guys.
Them guys, yeah, them people in the shop. So that troubles me a little bit, just saying, "Go ahead," because this is going to be devils in the details, which I think can be worked out between the residents and the due diligence of the plant commission. So I struggle with that, you know, kind of giving a go-ahead without having the details, which I think could be worked out.
Well, so Vic, is one of the choices that you kind of presented, that it was at the plant commission, it was denied. We could take this back to the board and work through some of these items?
Well, I mean, I would think that the board may want to conduct its own further review of this, give comments from, get comments from the Fire Protection District, from the residents nearby, and get a better understanding of it so that you can make the call. I would not, based on what you have right now, because it was an incomplete application and because you're getting everything secondhand, I would not suggest that you try to make a decision based on the, before you, if you're going to take it over. I think if you might want to make a determination based on the incomplete status of the application and uphold the PCDBA's recommendation, that you're primed to do. But if you are willing to have it, then I would suggest that you probably have to take the laboring war and get the feedback a little more directly so that you have the comfort level to decide what to do. And I'm not sure what the answer is, that's ultimately for you all to evaluate, but if you feel, after hearing that, that the location is an appropriate location for the use, and you want to go forward and offer conditions, then you can do that, and then it's up to the Fire Protection District to say, "That's good enough for us," or not. And if they decide not to, then that also resolves it. I mean, we can only decide based on what they've given us.
Okay, sorry to interrupt. I don't know how we set those conditions without including the, you know, the plant commission's diligence on the process. I mean, say, "Give us landscape plan, is that good enough?" I don't know. I mean, I mean, the residents need to have some input into that process. I mean, I think it comes into, eh, okay, it's close enough, it's good enough for something, right, or some compromise or whatever.
I would almost liken this to almost, you know, like a, a plan development process, where we go through multiple stages to get to the final approval. This is not a PUD, but we, we have a process like that, where we go through a, like a sketch plan to get the, the framework done, and then a preliminary PUD, which is when the approvals are granted, but that still requires the heavy lifting of all of the detailed design. So, it's not an unprecedented approach, but it's different from what we've already set out in the code for this type of use.
Understood. Under the premise that the clock is ticking, I imagine that's a long process as well. So what if you get to the end of that process and go, "Hmm, yeah, residents aren't happy, traffic studies are like marginal or whatever, and we don't think this is a great use." What have we gained by not using the plant commission to go through that process again?
You can. I think that, that, at least as I understand the, the back and forth with the Fire Protection District and Plant Commission, Fire Protection District felt that they have an urgency to move forward, and the plant commission was requesting that you meet all of the agent, or the application requirements, and those two timelines didn't, didn't jive. And that's why they asked for a vote and to come to the village board. And you can all say, "No, we don't have the application complete, we can't make a decision, and we uphold the plant commission." That is an option available to you, but that's not the only option.
I am not comfortable denying this. Go ahead.
No, no, Helen Wilson had her hand up, so go ahead.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, go ahead, Helen.
I, I, first of all, all of this discussion is not on this agenda. And so, in terms of the opportunity, I know dozens of people who wanted to participate in this discussion before the trustees and would have been here had it been on the agenda. A general discussion of Tyler's report is clearly within your purview, but making any decision on this project tonight, I believe, is totally out of the question, and not fair to the villages, and not legal because it's not on the agenda.
No decision's going to be made tonight.
That would not be for discussion, or for any kind of...
There's no decision being made tonight. This is the first readout, first discussion.
You know, it was my impression when Phil started, he said they weren't going to make a decision.
Yeah, so just...
It was a discussion.
Yeah, it's coming up with some, you know, where do you go with it? Because the next meeting, a decision's going to have to be made, so...
Can I, can I bring up one up?
Sure.
Steve Rettie, I just wanted to bring up that the traffic studies, I'm glad people brought up, I am concerned with that just as a resident, just trying to turn left. That's not the issue. The other one, one of the special needs permit requirements to have this is that there will be no harm done to adjacent property values. This is right in the midst of several developments, and I love the fire department, I have used them, you guys, a bunch. I have nothing against, I voted for the fire department to have this. That's not my issue. I thought that there was going to be an additional fire unit, fire department set up somewhere else, because that's how the ballot read, specifically, an additional, a new fire department. It didn't say a replacement, it said a new. Legally, I don't even know if that was legal to be worded that way and then replaced the current ones, but that's another story. My point again is the property values, I don't see how Briar, Crest East Gate, or Bridlewood will have increased property values or even maintain their current ones when the fire station is there, even with the vets of landscaping. The siren use is going to be higher, and as a result, there's no way that our values are going to be maintained. There are many studies that are done that way, and we can provide some. So that, that's just another point that was brought up. I am not convinced the funds are sufficient to build a, build a society to scale, but that's, that's again, the fire department's burden. I get that. I just don't have any faith in the transparency in the process. So that's, that's my issue. I was at the last meeting with Chairman Wilson, and I appreciate the board and their candor in talking to the attorney for the project. I mean, it seems rash to move forward in a project like this of this scope, with this effect on the entire community. If the traffic studies show that it's going to be harder to get through, if the surveys show that it's not even faster at a much closer location to the majority of Long Road, it's just concerning in many, many areas.
Thank you for your additional comments. Trustee O'Reilly, you were going to say something?
Well, no, I'm just trying to put this together in, in a reasonable way that can satisfy most of us. And it seems as if our big enemy right now is time. And sometimes when you try to do something too quickly, you do it wrong. And I'm fearful that if we do this too quickly, and I know, I know sometimes, there's always a way to prolong it or delay it, or, or protect yourself in another way. And I, I just can't see us rushing to get, I know what I want done, but I, but I know now more what I don't know, that I need to know in order to make the decision. And, and, and that can't be had quickly. I mean, the, I don't know. Do you have traffic study? No. Where you, no. That seems odd to not have a traffic study. I don't have any idea how far along you are in the, in the planning process of building, I assume not far. And so, take a month, get a month and an extra month, and, and do some of the things that, that people need, that board needs. This is like buying a pig in a pulpit, and, and we shouldn't do that. And that's not, I don't think anyone has anything in opposition to the fire department. They could be wonderful neighbors, but, but we need to know before we venture into this large decision.
This seems, we're being told that there's some kind of time of the essence with regard to the seller of the land. I'm not sure I get that. I don't think that there's like buyers standing in line for this land. If land is immediately mixed over, that means, is true, isn't it? And so, I don't get why time is of the essence, such that they can't have their ducks in a row, like every petition, as you point to the plant commission, and have the details such as, or missing as indicated in Taylor's report, presented to us, and they haven't done that. The plant commission is either for or against this location at this point in time. We just, they don't, they didn't give us enough information, the ducks aren't in a row in this, and we were willing to give them another, continue to come with these things, to turn, after consulting, I won't, with the chief or who, we want it either be voted up or down, because we have no choice but to vote it down. That's why what happened, happened.
Thank you for that comment. There's, I'll let the gentleman in the back here speak.
I'm Scott Reed, I'm a 35-year resident of Briar Crest, and we, I think a couple years ago, went through something with Holly Bunyan, and it was going to be rezoned to allow for high-desky retail stuff, and that was voted down by the, by the board after...
That was the plant commission? I'm sorry, that was the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan?
That wasn't an actual plan, that was a wish list.
Yeah, yeah, and we basically took it out and left it residential.
Understood. But we did voice our concerns over the change in the sort of rural atmosphere, the private values, we went through all that, you know, back to that. So those, those issues have changed for us. Anything that goes there that's not, you know, in keeping with the existing surroundings is going to be a complete change in one or neither property values. But the one concern I have from hearing you tonight is you talked about paying deference to the fire district, to the extent that they selected this property as the location, and that looking at other options really isn't part of the purview of the planning commission. And I don't understand that. How do we, how do we just start with, "This is the location, let's hope they come up with the details that residents can all say, 'Well, that's fine, they've got the landscaping, they've got the traffic controls,'" when any of the other possible options weren't even looked at? And if I'm hearing correctly, are you not expecting presentation of alternatives then as part of this?
No.
Or we're just deferring that they selected it, that's where we're going?
I would feel very uncomfortable second guessing that. I'll be candid, I would. I don't think that is our purview. I think the question is, do we think for this property, that's appropriate use? And I completely understand why the plant commission said no, to all the things that have been said at least three times here. I, I'm uncomfortable second guessing the fire department on that location, and I'm comfortable with the amount of detail we don't have. So, that's how I feel.
And I understand that, but second guessing, at least you can understand, did they go through a process of looking at other options? You don't have to second guess the decision to go with this, but if all they did was enter into a contract for this location, there's no due diligence.
I really don't, I'm sorry, I disagree. We had somebody bring us, they wanted to put a car wash at a place up on 83, at a property that would very much would like to have, it's on the edge of a residential area also, it used to be residential, it would be mean to make somebody be right there on 83 by Cutler Workwear kind of thing. We didn't ask them, "Where else did you look at for a car wash?" We just had to look and say, "For that property, this is not," and we said, "No. For that property, this is not what we think is a good use," for a number of reasons, you know.
Well, yeah, and so what I, I think we're getting about an hour into this discussion, and it's going to go all the way to nine o'clock. We, we're probably, we're not going to come to a conclusion tonight, so I'm looking for a, a way to, you know, kind of conclude tonight, to, to put this in a spot, because it'll be on the agenda probably for the next meeting, but you, we're still, we're still probably needing a lot, a lot more information. So I don't know, so we, is there a way to get some of the missing information? Is there a way to get the application more complete, get it back to us, so that we can decide, do we remand it back to the plant commission?
I think one option, if that's the approach you want to take, would be to set this for discussion at your next meeting with, it require, but we can certainly tell you our expectations of the Fire Protection District to have more information regarding perhaps the overall response time and why this is an optimal site from their perspective, how it might address some of the issues that have come up, traffic. And again, the board is ultimately going to make its decision from the land use perspective, and the Fire Protection District is going to offer its information based on its expertise, and there's a balance to be struck. But I think without the information coming directly to you, it's going to be a hard thing for you all to, to make any kind of call on. And whether or not, back to Trustee O'Reilly's point, whether or not you ultimately decide we're going to do something here, or whether you're going to send it back to the plant commission, it seems like there's a, an information gap right now as to the acceptability or appropriateness of this site, and more information should be coming to this board about that.
So who can help put together that list of items and get it to the fire chief? And everyone, would everyone be okay with that? And then we'll have it, as for discussion, again, no action maybe at the next meeting, just discussion again. We invite everyone to come. And, you know, can, can somebody put that together?
I think Taylor and Jeff and Art will be happy to do that.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Can I ask Jeff to answer your question?
Sure.
Can traffic studies be done regarding what is, or what is?
Traffic studies generally are based on the Illinois Handbook for Transportation Engineers, and it has different, you know, projection rates for different types of buildings, or uses, houses, residential, commercial properties, gas stations, you have it, fire stations will be one of them. So, as Chief mentioned, we have a meeting scheduled with the Lake County Division of Transportation on Thursday, and I am anticipating that'll be one of the first things they ask for in the state when the application comes forward for access is the traffic study. Lake County Division of Transportation has their own requirements for a traffic study, which are more robust than most municipalities, so it would be well-served that they provide that level of information, but as Chief mentioned, they're just not, they haven't provided that yet.
That's something that's probably been done for advocacy, so it wouldn't have to be something that we would have to do now for access.
Yeah, before they wipe it.
Before the wiping?
Yes.
Um, but, you know, what is, I don't know what assumptions the county has made for that particular property, so the property will want to see what the char, traffic projection is coming there.
No, I'm a, yeah, they're going back and forth.
But if you put a fire station, what does that change?
Right.
Yeah, what does it change?
And how many are stuck in front of it when they are?
Well, when you have nothing, if you can get something, it might be a, just, just the, my second, my second question.
There's one more.
Okay.
There, there are wetlands among...
There, there are wetlands on, on, in Briar Press. Are, are there, I would be interested in, and I think the builders would be interested in, is the soil very handled with twenty-four thousand square feet of building? And what about impervious surface? Wetlands, soil and so forth. Those, those questions could also be answered. Are those fair questions, issues?
Those questions were all brought up by the PCCBA members and were not answered. So you're not asking anything new that hasn't already been asked by the PCCBA? And they were not answered.
No, I was just, I, thank you. And I, I understand that. From an engineering standpoint, those, are those time sucks? Or can they be done relatively?
So. Yeah, I'll answer a couple of those separately. So the first one about, you know, soils supporting it and things like that, you know, out of my wheelhouse, but I will tell you that, you know, based on the soils, there are ways to build a building on just about anything. Question, question is money. So, second thing, the wetlands that are on the site, you know, this project will have to follow the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance, which has very specific requirements as far as studying the wetlands, you know, going through and making sure you got proper jurisdictional determination from either the Lake County Stormwater or the Army Corps of Engineers. And then past that, you know, there's very strict and documented, you know, things you can and can't do in there. So, you know, the ordinance is available, the chief, I presume, understands that's out there. So they make the decision based on what's written there.
Thank you. Has the district worked on some of these things? The wetlands and so forth?
We talked to Jeff about our architect, that, that addressed that issue.
And all of the requirements?
I'm aware of it, I haven't expended much.
Because that meant stop you.
Right. Can I ask you a question?
Well, what I'd like to do at this point though, too, I kind of want to get a motion to continue this to the next meeting, because it's already one fifteen. And we're going to go, it'll be all the way till ten o'clock tonight. And we're not going to accomplish anything until we have more information. So I apologize for doing that to you. But, so it was moved by who? So trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly.
I'm sorry, what was moved actually?
It continues to be discussion at the next meeting. It's set it down. I mean, this, by the way, this was an incredibly helpful discussion night. We know that we're missing a lot of information. You were missing, the plan commission was missing a lot of information.
So we want more information at the next meeting, otherwise we'll just go.
Yeah, and so we're going to try to get that for the next meeting. All right, one last comment, I'm sorry, I didn't, well, there's two. Go ahead, please.
I just have a question. If the fire department wasn't spending funds on studies, why do we want to buy this land and then figure out how to do it? This doesn't make any sense. And there's, you've got to do some good deal of it. Why, why buy land and then figure out how to do it?
Well, the contract may be subject to that.
Yeah, we'll find that out as we go along here. Another question?
Yes, one last question in terms of the, I guess now the motion that just passed. It would seem that the data that was lacking, and to Mr. Philippi's comment, that left the planning commission no choice but to deny, sounds like significant information. Environmental, economic, hazmat, traffic, et cetera. Is the expectation of the board that all that will be done by the next meeting?
No.
No, no, not at all, not at all. I think what we're saying is we're going to continue discussion, we're going to find out what we can get, what we can't get. And then hopefully we'll have some information to take it to the next level. It may be that the board decides to remand it back to the plan commission, and it will continue there. I don't know. We don't, this is our first readout. We, you know, we don't even really have a full understanding of everything, and you can understand that.
Maybe that, Mr. President, sorry, this is all nudity, but would we not rely first on the planning commission being satisfied? I get the feeling that the board may, or the trustees may have an opportunity to override and approve something the planning commission has denied. Is that?
We always have that up.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay, so the metric you're now working towards is sufficient information for the trustees, but maybe not necessarily the planning commission?
Sufficient enough information for the trustees to decide what to do next. Do we give it back to the plan commission? Do we keep it, right? Do we say no?
And.
Do we, do we back that?
Last question. Mr. Philippi, I think you outlined three options that the board would have. Deny, remand, or approve and then get the data after the fact. Is that a fair characterization?
The third, the third one wasn't quite as, as you put it.
It was approved and then?
It would approve it with conditions, and those conditions would still then need to be satisfied. But it would depend on what information is available and what action the board decides to take.
If those conditions were not satisfied, would that undo the prior approval?
It would give them a zoning thing, or it would give them basically a silly asset.
So we have.
As with any of our special approvals with zoning, there are typically conditions. If the conditions are not met, that approval lapses.
So we have a motion. It was moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Please take a roll call.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Baroski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Sanucci.
All right, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, appreciate it. It'll be September, September twelfth.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Will we be able to expand the public comment from ten minutes later?
Uh, we can.
No. No, no.
Your time is like the past, with all due respect. We've done these work for you since you hit me there.
No, we'll work.
My point is, I.
Can't have an hour or two.
We can't have that. We start making silly, I, I am not functional at eleven at night.
So we'll work, we'll, we'll, we'll work together.
I'd rather start early.
Continue to.
No.
Information that was spoken to the zoning committee that wasn't cross-eyed. And there's very great news of facts that you all heard from the chief. And you deserve to know all.
I like it.
You deserve to know all of the information before you made your decision.
We absolutely do, and we would.
And you need us to give that to you.
Yes, we do.
I would ask.
You did not get it in this presentation.
Would ask, instead of me in writing, I read everything. I think we.
Yep. So, I mean, again, thank you.
It also needs to be on the agenda, because it wasn't on the agenda specifically.
We didn't take it tonight.
We weren't going to take action tonight, yeah.
But we specifically told the management of Briar Press that it wasn't on the agenda, so we didn't need to come tonight. So we need to be very, we did our title.
Action wasn't on the agenda. But the topic. There was no action on the agenda, but the topic was to discuss the village planners' report. It was in the board packet.
Right.
Online, yeah.
I think we need to be a little bit more prescription going.
Again, we've, the agenda was noticed properly. And we'll have the discussion, a specific discussion on, item on the agenda next time. So, there you go. Thank you.
I would like to say.
Thank you for calling. Yeah, I'm sorry if I'm getting blunt. I appreciate, I absolutely really appreciate that, that all of you show up. And I appreciate and want to know what everybody is thinking and what your perspectives are. Because we don't read minds.
Well, I'm fine, as long as you don't mind getting back.
No, I, I don't mind getting back. I don't, I do not.
It's going to get interesting, I can already tell.
I don't, I just, I don't read minds. I do read all of the stuff that's in front of me.
So, so again, thank you, everyone. And this matter is being taken seriously, so don't think it's not. So, thank you. Appreciate it. All right.
I have two things.
Yeah.
The manager of the information getting about the land is a non, we need more specific information. I also want to make certain that, they're saying that the plan commission heard information that was not mentioned tonight. I want to make certain ideas in, in some form.
Yeah.
What Ellen does it or for?
I think that's a valid point. And the other thing we need to do a better job of, and again, we just went through a transition of village manager. Art, you failed already, yeah, there you go. No, no, no. So one of the things was, if you even wanted to see the application, not in our board packet, you had to go to the plan commission agenda to pull it down. It should have been posted in our, in our, in our board packet. And it should have been out there publicly, right? So to your point, and I know Taylor, I, you may have to, I mean, Jim Hoag would write novels, okay? So, our former village planner, and, and.
I believe it was nonfiction.
Yeah, and I would cuss like all hell that I had to read all this stuff. But you probably need to, probably put a few more items in there, in your writers' list, so.
Or a link.
Yeah. So thank you. All right, anything else? Please.
Mr. President, sorry, one last question, and I'll let you all go. And with my knowledge, this is my first public, or being my first college meeting. So, chief, thank you for your comments. Trustees, the duty of care is evident. So I'm very grateful I was assisted for that. Will the information that the trustees are requesting for the next meeting, is there a way to let the community know that so we know what some of the?
Yes.
We talked about a lot of different studies. That might just help people feel better about what it is that you will be receiving.
Do you know where the information is that we get in our packets on the public website? Okay, so if you, if you, if you go into the Village of Long Grove and go into transparency in the meetings, there will be details, I think it's called, or something?
It's not the agenda.
Not the, no, not the agenda. The agenda is the one-page agenda.
You have it right next to it.
It'll be right next to that agenda. You see almost everything. We get, anything else with executive privilege or the memo from the manager, you do not see, but everything else should be there. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm not sure how we're going to get through our agenda, so we'll figure this out.
Hey, I'm nine o'clock, we're.
Yeah, I think we are, so just shut the lights out and be done. So the next item is discussion and consideration referral to the plan commission board of appeals of a zoning text amendment regarding temporary use and proposals for planning and development of the property located at twenty-seven Route fifty-three. So who's going to take the lead in setting this up?
Let me at least offer a clarification in terms of what they're actually doing the referral on. The text amendment, this is regarding the so-called Geimer property out on fifty-three. The text amendment that would be required would be to extend the duration of temporary uses. If you remember, we've already, I think, kicked that down the road a couple of times. But based on the plan that's being offered, there would be a need for a further extension of that. That's the text amendment that's required. In addition, because this is in our H R district, it would require them to go through the plan development process. And that's the multi-step process that was in Mr. Wondery's letter. So that's not a text amendment. The extension of the temporary use duration is the text amendment. But nevertheless, all this is coming to you initially to say, are we even interested in giving that extension? Because it probably won't work in their, in their approach to the development of this property if they can't get that extension. I don't want to put words in, in the petitioner's mouth, but that's what I thought I heard when I spoke to them.
Please, yeah, go ahead.
What we're trying to do is throw back an ancient history of this property. And the grounds that's been submitted thus far is actually it reaches the standard of what you call a schedule. Most of this plan was essentially assumed as a preliminary flat back in the day. And the only change that I made to the preliminary flat that was approved, and by the way, that preliminary flat expired, because that particular owner didn't take it any further in getting the plan. Virtually everything in this area is identical to that preliminary flat. It's something you've seen before. The only change I made to it is I'm keeping the old greenhouse building. What we'll be doing is we're revamping this building, square it up, making it a little bit larger. And now it becomes like permanent uses, okay? There's a little bit of a gas station site that we put down here on the corner. So what we'd be saying is, please take a look at this as a, what I said, you know, a temporary plan. And then we will submit to you a P U D with all of the list of required uses. So if you've heard of this, I'm here every six months asking you for an extension. I know you're getting tired of seeing it here. So what we're trying to say is, let's make it permanent. Let's make a permanent P U D here with a list of specifics that are based on some studies that we've done. And I'll let Joe give you a briefing on that real quick. Because this is what we've done, is we've figured out a tremendous number of businesses in the region that are located within your trade area. And we'd be now all of a sudden having a plan that's real, that they can come in and start occupying space. So that's what our overall goal is here. I'll let Joe take it from here.
So I'm Joe Santucci with Alwan, and we own the property. So we've put a bad issue. And what we've done over, over time is, the former Geimer Nursery, we've been able to populate it with businesses, successful businesses that are doing real well, Camp K-9 being one. And that's also driving the extension need, because he's unable to renew his lease. I mean, his business, he put a lot of money into this space. So what Currie came up with is a plan that basically builds off of the plan that was approved in the past. But it saves the building, you know? And we, you know.
Hey, can I just stop you for one second? Because I think the thing, so in 2010, there was a P U D approved for this property, right? I don't know, I don't even know the whole board knows that. Does the board know that?
Being told now?
Yeah, but you're learning it now, right? So I don't think, we don't know that. I mean, I mean, I know that only because I was digging into some of this stuff. And it was, the Geimers requested this P U D, right?
Right. And so, so what happened when that ended? And the other thing to point out, this isn't a tip district. So for us to, to make use of it, to generate revenue, the development of this is paramount, because that will generate sales tax revenue, which we, obviously, got a bit of the village. So what we did was we ran, it's called a void analysis. We talked about it at our last meeting. And it listed.
I read it.
It listed a lot of business sites. And what it does is analyze them, who can go where, based upon where they are at, based upon the demographics of the area, who would be a customer there, who are they best situated to be next to. And we've got some really good results from it, right down to the business names we can call. Some of them, one was the electric car, that was Tesla, Fisker.
Rivian.
Rivian?
Rivian.
Rivian. So those types of businesses.
Go to Buffalo Grove.
We got, what was it? The Outliers, the loose clothing. But just kind of neat, little retail uses. But we're not able to market, we're not able to promote or do anything to try to lure any of those types of businesses in here, because we're still acting under that special use permit, which has, which is finite. It basically was extended in, I want to say, June of 2025. It's hard to make decisions or to try to lure somebody into this type of development if you don't have a permanent, as you first point, you know, to come back here every six months or to try to figure out how we can make best use of the property. So that's really what we're here, this is considered, I guess, a sketch or concept plan, which is one of the early steps. And then if this is something that we can get approved, then we would get into the, into the mire and get into the more detail.
Essentially, the next step would be a preliminary flat. That gives us a three-year window to get all these tenants in and the buildings built. And then from there, a final flat. It's difficult to say, for a final flat, this one is kind of, we're zoning with it.
Yeah, right, the current zoning.
It's planned a preliminary flat.
And the current zoning, I know, H R, which is, means construction.
It's a little bit.
Yeah. And this would actually benefit the outlots for Menards, because they're also in that H R district. So they would have better opportunities to develop those outlots, because right now they're very limited on what they can do.
And just a clarification on that. Not to be correcting you, but I will. Menards already has their P U D, and they have uses that have been authorized for those outlots. This property also had approved uses, but when they did not advance their preliminary P U D and it expired, they reverted back to the straight H R, which, when we enacted it, it was intended to be developed as a planned unit development, which is why it has very few opportunities to use absent a planned unit development. And the use list that was in your packet largely mirrors what we already have in our what we already have in our B-1 and B-2 districts. So I mean, it's, there are a couple of outliers in there, but for the most part, the uses that they're identifying are uses that are already allowed elsewhere in the village. So they're not, they're not, even though the list is long and imposing, it's actually not unfamiliar.
They are, yes.
There are some that are, you're right, there are some that are additive, and there are some that would be a marked change in what our existing policy is. I, I don't, you know, if, if, if one were to ask me, I wouldn't necessarily think that those changes are appropriate. Nevertheless, when you still look at that list, I would say 90% of it is all existing uses in one or other district of the village.
So I stand corrected, thank you.
Yes.
The, the business types that were in that list, extensive list, I had, you're right, it's B-1, B-2, kind of combined. It also takes that void analysis that lists other business types, and it does populate or integrate it in there. Maybe about 10 or 20% of businesses were put in. And we actually eliminated businesses that we didn't think would fit into the fabric of the community, the obvious on-shop, you know, service. Well, I don't know, you know, if you're talking cannabis, I have no problem with it not being in or being in, I, you know.
I think if we were ever putting cannabis, it should be in that TIF district area. Along Lake Hook Road in that area is the only place that it would make sense because nobody really thinks of it the same as Long Grove.
Do you have room for-
So I had it, I actually put it, we kept it in just so that people would have-
So what exactly are you looking for?
For purposes of, for purposes of tonight, because this involves, for purposes of tonight, because this would involve an amendment to the code and a well-worn amendment in terms of that duration of the temporary use, they're getting their initial reaction from the board to see if they can go to the Plan Commission to actually formally request that amendment. We have a provision in our code that when a text amendment is being proposed, the board has the, the first opportunity to say, yeah, that's not going to happen, or, yeah, we're willing to consider it. And that's really the state that we're in tonight.
I move we do this.
So you're really looking for motion to refer to the Plan-
We, we have a-
No, we refer to the Plan Commission.
So you, did, did you just move that?
Yeah, and he said-
Yeah, I'll start that.
By trustee Broowski?
Trustee Chris Meyer. Hi. Trustee Broowski.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil. Trustee, trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Motion carried. Wow. Thank you for staying here. All right, Bill?
Thank you.
Elder manager, wish you much luck.
I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
You guys got room for a firehouse down there, by the way?
All right, Village Engineers Report. I would ask you to do the speediest version you've ever done, but don't leave out the facts.
If you have anything important, that's tough. All right, Village Engineers Report, it's in the board packet. A lot going on, I'll just highlight a couple things. Michigan Water Connection, Village State, interim manager Osteen was involved with that in Buffalo Grove last week, presented us with a draft agreement in connection with them. And I understand Vic's office is reviewing that. Robert Park, Coffin Bridge, unfortunately, was hit again last week. Repairs are being coordinated. 2023 Road Program, we get a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow with Peter Baker and son. We will get a detailed schedule with them at tomorrow's meeting. As I've mentioned, there's a deadline for work in Long Grove to be done by September 15th, and that is coming very quickly. So we will have spirited discussion with Peter Baker about making sure that that's done because there's not only one thing to plan around in the downtown, there's two. We get Apple Fest, September 22nd through 24th, and then there's also the very state half marathon the following week. So that debate date was developed, but we want to make sure that they're done and out of the way on that, or there could be the other conversation of, hey, can they do the work after that? And I'll get more information on that tomorrow. Hopefully not. All right, jumping down, Apptecusic Road widening, moving along. Illinois Route 22 widening, the state's multi-year plan came out, 2025 through 2029. No real firm commitment on when that project is completed, just somewhere in there.
Looks like they got moved out another year potentially, or did I read that correctly?
Have you talked to our Senator lately about the timing?
Dan McCocky, no, I haven't. Yeah, no, I can talk to Dan. You're driving it.
And then that was the widening project. The other project that's in the state's multi-year plan is the intersection improvements of 22 and 83. Stanley Field's not committed in the multi-year plan, other than somewhere in there.
Can I talk about this one, though?
Yep.
Yeah, so Village Manager Jackson, before we left, put me in the middle of an email with the state, where the state was saying that if they couldn't come to an agreement with the Long Grove Park District, they were going to pull the plans for a shared use path on the southeast corner of 22 and Route 83. And so it would go, that whole, like a quadrant there, where there would be a, a bike path that would go down the, the south side of the road, and then it would go, continue going south on 83.
So along Longview Meadow.
Along Longview Meadow Park, right? So I asked the state, and I never got a response back, what's, what's the issue? Why hasn't Park District, why aren't they cooperating, or are they not cooperating? I never got a response back. But I did talk to Jim Southwell, he was out of town, I did talk to him today. He is the Park District President, Long Grove Park District President. And he said that, he didn't see that, you know, the easements are being asked as, as anything that they couldn't work through, right? They, he thought that's something they, they could do. But what he mentioned to the state was, we gave a parcel, a wetland mitigation parcel to the Park District. We transferred it to them. I guess the state's still owns title to it.
Still owned by IDOT, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, we, we said that, we said the Park District can have it, and I don't remember how long ago it was.
Oh gosh, five years.
Five years, the state still has not deeded it over to them. So he threw that in there, saying, hey, I have no problem, but are you ever going to deed the property to us?
Is it tied up in Gilmore and?
Yeah.
Oakwood and 83.
Yeah, next to Kent Subdivision there at Oakwood there, yeah. It's never been transferred to the Long Grove Park District.
I thought they were transferring it to us, and we were transferring it to-
So the Village Board approved the transfer from IDOT to the Park District instead of IDOT to the village. That was approved by the Village Board only five years ago.
Yeah, a long time ago, yeah.
During our review.
When I was Park District President, I worked with IDOT to try to get that transferred. Like, three years ago, I was told, oh, only needs one more signature, that's it. But because of COVID, it's taken a long time.
Put it, put it in a frame of reference. In 1992, we agreed with IDOT that we would acquire that property.
Yeah.
And it was in 2019, just before the pandemic, that we finally got all the paperwork to assign our right to purchase to the Park District.
Okay, so four years ago.
And, yeah, and where it's gone since then, I, I think that, you know, COVID may have some delays, but I think it's probably in, it's, it's next to the Lost Ark in that big warehouse, if you remember.
Is there a snake?
He's hanging in, but what I did ask Vic today on the, on the way here, because I got to Southwell this afternoon, is, you know, can we, you know, find out who we were working with, right? And can he write and try to get something moving on that side so that they will move on the easement side? I think it's only fair to ask, and we should be able to help out, right?
To, to the extent that it is next to the Lost Ark, we can resurrect the documentation and make sure that it gets in front of anybody who might be involved, and, and in that way, maybe get this ball moving again.
So anyways, that's the update. I just want to make sure I, I shared that with you, so thank you.
Kind of the sidewalks.
The sidewalks will happen if we, I, I don't think that he's saying that they're not going to work with the easement for the sidewalks. It's just, can we get this other thing moving? And as long as-
Yeah, but I, I hadn't interpreted it.
I know, but so the, the state still owes me a call or a response back. They haven't responded to me either.
Well, it took them 47 years to give us permission to sell to the Park District. You may not want to-
So, so Vic, Vic will, will, will work through that. I'm just saying, we're, I'm going to follow up on that part too, so, yeah, don't worry. We're not giving up that sidewalk, so. All right, continue on.
Okay, counter subdivision, no safety road drainage project. We had a pre-construction meeting with DTA Contractors last week. They gave us a very optimistic start date of next Monday. However, just to kind of go through the logistics of that start date, making sure we got equipment, materials, and stuff like that on their end. Looks like it's going to be deferred for at least another week. So keep, keep the village manager and the board advised of when that's going to start so we can properly notice residents of the work. Good news is DTA Contractors did tell us that's going to be a two-week project, one week of heavy installation, and then the second weekend is, or the second week is kind of cleanup and restoration.
So Jim Finn's here, so any questions?
With that project, you know, that culvert that is attached to 7061 Osage Road, and the villagers are looking to see what they can do about getting that fixed. What's going, because if that culvert's not fixed, the water will not get to the hill.
Is 7061 on the south side?
Yes, it's the last, the way the water comes, it'd be the last driveway that has to go underneath before we get there.
Yeah, I know Greg was spearheading that one, so, all right, I'll work with you to see.
Touch, touch base with me tomorrow on that.
Correct.
Did you get the one near the cullis, that one?
Is further up towards that intersection, Willis, correct? Uh, no, the other way.
Thank you.
And then the other question, I appreciate all the work you've done. Could you explain to me the reason that, I guess my first question is, I know we previously talked, you said that the inlet was going to be nine inches below, the top of the inlet would be nine inches below the culvert that goes underneath the street?
That was the initial design, right.
And I know the culvert is half the culvert that goes underneath the street.
Yeah.
The ditch that's going to be, the depth of the ditch going underneath the culvert, will that still be nine inches? I know, because I know the top of the inlet's going to be nine inches below the culvert, but the slope of the ditch, will the bottom of the ditch, when it's going by the culvert, be at nine inches too, or will it be?
Well, there is no ditch under the new pipe culvert, with the new pipe that's being put in. So, the pipe replaces the ditch through that section.
No, 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 I understand that. But the inlet's going to be, I guess, the water would go past the culvert that goes underneath the road?
The road crossing culvert, correct.
So my question is, is, how, how far past that is the inlet for that point?
How far past, like 30 feet?
So, my whole question is, to do this was to try to alleviate some of the water going underneath the street to go onto the property. But if the inlet's going to be 30 feet farther east, there's still going to be, when all that heavy water comes in, that inlet will not be at maximum capacity, which we were, which I was explaining it would be before water starts coming underneath the street. So we're doing all this work, but that, that pipe will not be at maximum capacity as was originally explained before we start seeing water coming underneath the street because it's going to pass the culvert first, am I correct?
So the, the design is for the new pipe to convey the ten-year storm. That's the served grant requirement that was discussed before meeting. We've done the calculations. The other thing to remember, all the water is running east-west under, or along Osage. Let's call it east-west, along the-
Right away.
We're putting this pipe in line with that right away. Water flows very well downhill in straight lines. And we're talking about turning and going across the road. So water is going to bypass that, even, even if it does go up that just a little bit and go into the-
So how, what's the, the-
It was nine inches, we're looking at, you know, maximizing that.
So it has, the water would have to be over nine inches tall before it would go across the street?
It was nine, you know, it's, it's probably going to be more like 12 or 15 by the time we're done.
But I guess, I'm sorry, I might not be getting my-
Yeah.
I understand the inlet's going to be passed, and the water will be moving, you know, past the culvert, but I guess from the regrading that's going to be done and stuff like that, will, will the existing grade be as that unit is now? I understand your question.
Yes, the ditch will be lowered in front of that road crossing.
The water will still have to be at a 12-inch depth-
Yeah, to get across the street.
-before it goes into the culvert.
Yeah.
The road crossing culvert. I understand your question.
Yeah.
I guess, appreciate all the work that you've done, and thank you.
No, thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, keep going.
Did you check the road traffic calming? And there's a separate agenda, I'll give you lead on that, and a report.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Bill, if I could ask you one more question?
Sure, Jim.
So, again, that, that 7061, what happens, if that, like, that culvert doesn't get replaced, now, if it doesn't help the flooding in 7056, and the water won't be able to get to that culvert. So basically, I guess, I have to, no matter, any way, shape, or form, no matter what happens, that culvert will get replaced?
I don't understand.
So we don't have the culvert in the project? Culverts are the homeowner's responsibility. So I'll work with Greg on where that is. Would you have ditch regrading in, in this project? So that will happen regardless.
So I, I, I know the board was saying that it was almost certain that the ability could take upon responsibility of just replacing that culvert and not putting a lien on the property or something. My whole state, my whole thing is, is if that culvert doesn't get replaced, it will, then it's the problem.
So what I would ask our new, our interim village manager to do, working with Village Engineer Perry, is to kind of get back to us with an understanding of what needs to be done, and if there's any costs, what those would be, and anything else. So, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Thanks for being here. We missed you last time, too. No, I'm just kidding. All right, so, so on to the next topic is, it's, it is basically discussion and consideration of a resolution adopting the Lake County All Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Jeff, I will ask you to set this up because it was not in the board packet initially. It was there, and then I looked at all the little items in there, and I'm like, oh, well, that doesn't apply to Long Grove. And, but apparently, we approved this plan in 2017. We need to approve it because if we want any federal funding, we have to buy into the plan. We've actually done several things that says we still need to do. And, yeah, go ahead, so.
So, so you've got the county's All Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, last approved by the village, like you said, in 2017. It's updated every five years. Why it's six years this time, and it's going to be four years next time, I don't know. But, hey, on the average, it's five. So in here is 20, not 20, 15 different action items for the Village of Long Grove issue listed, page 6-66. Don't get it confused with 666. So, anyway, the, the things to remember about this plan. Number one, adopting it puts the village in great position to get federal relief, grant assistance should, you know, things get decimated by a natural disaster. Second thing is, you know, this is a plan, confirmed with the county again today. This does not obligate the Village of Long Grove to do anything. In fact, the conversation was a little bit lighthearted with Lake County today that, you know, a lot of these items were the same that were on there in 2017. And, you know, the county never followed up with the village saying, hey, you didn't do this. So take that for what it may.
It's aspirational.
Yes, so there, there's a number of items in here, and I don't know if this email is forwarded over to the board members or not, but there's six, six of the items, seven of the items that the village already does. There's four of them that are goal-oriented, aspirations type driven. And then there's three of them that don't apply to Long Grove. We've informed the county that those three don't apply to Long Grove, and they acknowledge that. And in the 2027, writ updated this plan, they'll be removed. So, but then again, but the important thing is, there's this list of items, seven of them, over half of them, the village already does or is working on. So I would not discount how many items are listed to Long Grove, but take it that, you know, this is a plan, this is aspirational, this puts us in, puts the villages in great position if there is a natural disaster and adopt the plan.
Any discussion, or somebody want to make a motion to approve?
It looks like we need to pass it.
Okay, so a move by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi. Trustee Broowski.
I don't like going next all the time.
Oh, geez.
Did I hear an "i" there?
"i".
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
All right, motion carried. Um, I'm going to ask the board, and because of how late it is already, and the fact that I don't know that we have a ton of information for the checker traffic. I mean, do we want to defer that to the next meeting, or is there something you want?
We've had tons in the past.
No, as far as, there's nothing really in the board packet tonight.
Yeah, there was a late memo that came out, yeah.
Carrie just passed it out.
Yeah, so we defer that to-
Let's, let's talk about it next time.
All right, everyone okay with tabling it?
We can, we can do better justice to it next time.
Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of resolution approving the proposal from Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC for the application of Reclamant to North Kruger Road and the Stumpel Parking Lot. No, we haven't approved it yet. Okay, so, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor.
Trustee O'Reilly. Aye. Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Broowski.
Can I get some data in the future about the success of the Reclamite, and how that's been out in the field for years, can we get like some data besides the companies at the time?
So one thing that we have done, and this is the second year we did it, going back to the previous discussion, we're going to fly our drone and get some aerial imagery and videos of the road in the release, so, that's a good data point for that, we'll be making sure that interim manager Ossie and the department, you know, look at that.
Appreciate that.
It'll be too late for this meeting, but take a look at Oakwood Road and Oakwood Circle, they were among the first to be done.
Okay, but compared to what?
Right, they didn't do that.
Right, compared to what?
That's for that before.
Yeah, I'm ignored on the side of the table, Rita.
I thought you gave them, I thought we gave them.
Yes.
That's in, uh.
From the company.
From the company, independent.
What do we have, what documentation does the village have?
If we didn't do it, what would it look like?
The vote is aye, but we would really like to get some data in the future, and compared to how or what. And the other question I had towards the subject is, is there still only one game in town, is this not being competitively bid? And I just, I mean, it's just applying this material, so is anybody going to show it down, or is there anybody else that's further than the ground and throws sand on top of it, it doesn't seem that complicated. Just saying.
Yeah, it's still a proprietary one, and nobody has kind of figured out something similar.
But, but it's a replacement process, right, of the, whatever material that leaches out of the, out of the asphalt, that melane or melane something?
Yeah, it's maltein based.
Maltein based, right, so is there any other company that comes close even, somebody's got to be doing something close.
Somebody that does anything close as well. Everybody else, you know, the pavement rejuvenators, it's more of a seal coat than
Okay, so we put seal coat on versus Reclamite, what would that time span be, what would that difference be, and what would that cost difference be? I'm shutting up, thank you, aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
I've never been convinced that this does what it says it's going to do, but there's no comparison, I mean, I look at Oakwood Road every day and Oakwood Circle, as I watch my dogs, there are hairline cracks everywhere, but what would it have looked like if we didn't apply it, I have no idea.
No idea.
So at this point, I'm just trusting.
Okay, motion carried. So, village, uh, village president and trustee reports, it's kind of late, so I don't know if we're going to go into executive session, but I did send out the two, the emails from the two headhunters, so if we want to go to executive discussion to talk about it. Also, Art has a few thoughts, too, so we'll have to make that decision, but that's the only thing that I'm focused on right now, is keeping that moving. So, if we want to have, spend a few minutes in executive session, I just to touch base we can.
Can we do it exquisitiously?
Yeah, we can, well, can we? Okay. Yeah, so ten minutes, okay, so then, that's all I have, trustee Broowski, what is your report?
None, thank you.
Okay, trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Uh, no, do you have a report?
Yes.
And, no, do you have a report, anything to give, no, you're?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, trusty. Well, it's supposed to be economic development, and we're still working on that whole thing. Trustee Chris Meyer.
Um, has everybody answered the auditor, the questions on suspected fraud and so forth?
No.
Okay, please do that, it's not hard. Um, I just, I was delayed, no, I was, I was still, um, delayed also, because I was out quite a bit, so the audit is underway on all of that, and, uh, and take the classes to understand it even more.
Thank you. Trustee O'Reilly.
No.
Trustee Tanucci.
No.
Village manager's report.
Again, thank you all for hiring me, I'm looking forward to working with all of you and helping you move forward with your goals, and to, and my goal is to keep everything moving forward until the next, the permanent village manager is hired.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute, yeah.
Want us to wait?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. All right, so I would look for a motion to executive session.
For personnel.
For person, yeah, for personnel reasons, yeah.
Aye. So move.
Hold on a second, who moved it first? All right, trustee O'Connor, seconded by. All right, trustee Broowski, roll call.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Broowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer. Aye. Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
All right, motion carried. All right.
Are you comfortable, uh?
Yes.
Locking up?
Yes, yes, I can put the alarm on lockup, you can go.
Did you have all the signatures you need?
Oh, no.
Chief, thank you, Helen, thank you.
Good question.
Yeah.
Did you talk to Chris?
Um, I have not yet, but I'll, so, we keep going, see all the emails?
Yes.
Friday is what we're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I started, I took you off the last one, just, Jimmy did your last one.
Well, I, I don't care.
The culvert that you're talking about?
Um, next, I, we have, so we'll get it on the next meeting.
Or right before, if you wanted to. You come a little bit early.
At the next meeting, too, if we can, so.
A big meeting, next meeting, too.
Oh, yeah. Did that go okay, though? Were you, you didn't sound happy.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah. Okay, got it, well, thanks for your opinion, appreciate it.
Well, this is my opinion, I think you heard from others, people would have been more.
Yeah, we would have had on the agenda to deny tonight, no plan to do it, we didn't even have an.
Tell me what you got.
Yeah, there was not.
That would be great.
All right, well, then, you can blame me on that. I'll say, how perfect is that?
There's some test patches on some. Be lead behind yards on culvert. I turned, I love to.
Yeah, you can turn it off, yeah.
Yeah, I did, the broken culvert fifty, fifty feet exposed in that spot, and sort of.
What's the extra, uh, phone number? Hey, what's the extra one here?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
It seems like, uh, I mean, everything you, everything you read on the chemistry of it makes a lot of sense, I get that, but I like the monopoly aspect of it. Do anything, talk about anything you can. So we're getting five to seven out of Reclamite.
Oh, a better idea by tomorrow.
Uh, five years. I know, that's big.
Right here, it can't hurt.
Phone number or email or something?
Opperable chemistry. Right, I mean, plus, you know, they've got the IP, right?
Oh, well, that's okay.
Give you a couple later.
Don't ask, minor point, thank you.
Sounds good, Jim, good meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Yep, we're there, we're there, we're there. Joe, say hi to my friend Joe.
He's not talking to anybody anymore.
Oh geez, all right. All right, never mind. All right, so, I'm going to throw us into executive session. All right, never mind. All right, so I'm going to throw us into executive session. So.